I would like to call to order the September 16th, 2019 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Welcome. It's good to see such a full chambers tonight. If you would please stand at this time and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are very pleased to have Reverend Carol Karkin from Central United Methodist Church with us tonight for our invocation. Welcome.
Let us bow in prayer. Oh God, you design us to be communal creatures, and as we pause this night, as we come from work and head to new tasks, we pray your blessing to be upon us, that we might recognize the beauty even present in Mondays, as the weather begins to change and as we honor our leaders, as we appreciate those who work together in partnership, that this community might thrive, that all might have access to what they need most, to things like healthcare, and to food, to good education. Lord, thank you that so many are gathered here. Thank you that there is a time for work and for building community, and a time to celebrate retirements as well. In all seasons you are with us. Help us to hear and honor one another, to see each other, as you see us, as we convene this evening. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Karkin. We appreciate you being with us tonight. We're also pleased to be joined on the dais tonight with our youth commissioner, Kason Gardner. Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you for having me.
Excellent. Okay, first up is the approval or corrections of the minutes of our previous meeting, which you all have copies before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes and we move to approval of the agenda. And you also have a copy of our agenda before you, including the changes on page 59. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting agenda, including the changes on page 59?
Thank you for a favor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes and we move to recognitions and presentations. And first up is recognition of the Ashley O. Thrift Award. At this time, I would ask Deputy County Manager Jonathan Marshall and Mr. Robert Furr to please come to the front. All of us know Robert Furr as Robbie Furr, and he was recently recognized as the winner of the Ashley O. Thrift Award. That is a volunteerism award established in 2009 to honor Ashley's commitment, passion for children, and tireless efforts on behalf of Smart Start since its inception. Ashley Thrift served as the board chair, first at the local partnership in Forsyth County, and then for 14 years as the board chair for the North Carolina Partnership for Children. Each year, the state awards one individual with this prestigious honor, and this year, Cabarrus County's Robbie Furr has received the honor. Robbie has been a tireless volunteer in our, with our Cabarrus Partnership for Children. It has been my pleasure to serve there with him on that board. He has chaired that board, as well as previously chairing the board in Mecklenburg County for an extended period of time, but he truly has a heart for children and has done much to benefit the children of Cabarrus County, and for that, we thank you, and we're so excited that everybody else in the state of North Carolina agrees with us and has given you this award. I think along with the very handsome award came a thousand dollar contribution to our local Smart Start effort. So, thank you so much for everything that you have done, and you are a Cabarrus County native, I might add, that we are all very proud of. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman of Commissioners, staff, thank you very much. It's just my pleasure to receive this recognition. It was definitely a great surprise that our executive director and Ben Field submitted that nomination, along with some other folks in the community. I think what's most important, however, is that this recognition shines an important light on the work that happens here in Cabarrus County at our partnership, and so I want to say thank you to you commissioners and to our county management for their support and for their collaboration with and investment in our local partnership here. Thank you.
Thank you. And we didn't even talk about all the good work that Robbie does heading up our local extension service here in Cabarrus County as well, but that is also appreciated. Next item on our agenda is recognition of Dr. William Pilkington on his retirement from Cabarrus Health Alliance. Dr. Pilkington, could you come forward, please? Dr. Pilkington, Fred, as we call him, has served 38 years in that role, which is pretty remarkable. I don't think there is another health department, and that's really not a proper term for the Health Alliance in Cabarrus County, but anybody with that much longevity and still has all their hair and most of it is not gray. You would think it should be white, but Dr. Pilkington has demonstrated innovative techniques in handling public health, I think, that has earned Cabarrus County a great deal of positive recognition throughout the state. I have attended many sessions in other parts of the state with other counties where they start talking about the health departments, and they'll put up a map, and they'll have, show the different types of organizations, and they'll say, "This applies to everybody but Cabarrus County." And that always makes us proud because of the innovative approach that you've taken to public health, I think has greatly benefited our citizens, and certainly the staff that you have assembled and the wonderful work that they do has benefited people all over Cabarrus County. You've placed us in a position to take advantage of many private grants and things that other communities do not benefit from, and I think I could go on and brag about the fact that we're one of the only school systems in the state with a school nurse in every school, and that comes from our Health Alliance as well. So, we could continue on and on, but we just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for your many years of service to Cabarrus County. We hope you're not leaving. We plan to continue to benefit from your presence in many ways, but a sincere thank you for everything that you have done for Cabarrus County and its citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Check out my note here. You see Mark's bits on here. As we're actually in town, Mark.
Never expected that. May I say a couple of words?
Absolutely. We would expect no less.
When I first came here, I was the youngest health director in North Carolina. You can look at me by now and tell that's not the same and true anymore, but I wanted to thank you for this opportunity. I also wanted to thank our staff. When you say those things, nothing is possible without the people we have. We do great work there. As all of you know, we're one of the first five nationally accredited health departments in the nation. We were just re-accredited, one of the first 10 re-accredited nationally. We have always been a leader, and the leadership that exists there is all of the people sitting here. If you work for CHA, would you raise your hand, so somebody in this place can see you? These are great people, and they do really good work. Also want to introduce, probably one of the most unique things about me is I have two godchildren here from one of our staff, a clinical member. There they are. My godchildren, Heyday and Hannah, who have been very supportive to me over the years, but we do have a great staff, and I hope you will continue to support them because they are leaders, they are innovators, they are the people that do everything. My wife says about me, "Five degrees and no brains." And she's not able to be here tonight. She started getting ill about four o'clock this morning, has been ill all day, so unfortunately she's not here. I do also want to take this opportunity to thank all of you as commissioners. It is really nice to go out with the best set of commissioners I ever worked with, and I mean that sincerely. You have been supportive. The county manager has been the best county manager I've worked with, and I've worked with a lot. It's been so refreshing over these years to, and it's not to say that you don't challenge me, you always have, and as I was coming up the steps tonight, I was thinking, "It's the last time I'll come up these steps." Sometimes good, sometimes bad, but it was always really great to work with you because that support you've showed and that encouragement you have given me and the staff is important. When it has come to any issue, I have always felt that I could come to this board, make a case, and if it was a good case, you would support it, and that has been true. And it is really good to go out with that board, and that probably makes it the nicest thing in the world. That's the reason I asked for one recognition, and that was this one tonight with you, because I think you have been the most important force behind what's happened at the Cabarrus Health Alliance, and I really appreciate it, and I appreciate all you've done for me and for the staff. It has been an honor, a pleasure. If I could have dreamed of a job when I was 15 or 16, it would have been this one. It's been a dream job and a dream place to work, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for those kind comments, for us as well, and I think the collaborative spirit that has existed between the county and the Health Alliance is something that we aspire to all the time, and it has brought great success, and we very much appreciate it. I will add one more thing. Somebody asked me if there were so many people here from the Health Alliance because they were so happy for you to be leaving. I told them, "No, it was because they wanted to honor you," and that is sincerely the truth. But thank you, thank you again. Okay, next on our agenda is a proclamation for Crop Walk Hunger, for the Crop Hunger Walk Day Walk, and we are happy to have Dennis Testerman with us tonight to read that proclamation.
Or not.
Or not. And so he must not have a copy with him.
Do you have one?
I certainly do, and I'm more than happy to read it and allow you to comment on it afterwards if you'd like. Crop Walk, Crop Hunger Walk Proclamation, ending hunger one step at a time. Whereas healthy food is essential to thriving, to growth, and to a prosperous, long life, but those without land to grow food or money to buy are likely to suffer from hunger. And whereas 800 million people around the world are hungry, including 11% to 12% of Americans, and whereas 3.2 children die from hunger each year, and 66 million primary age, school-aged children around the world go to school hungry, in addition to 1 in 5 American schoolchildren who risk going to school hungry. And whereas the Crop Hunger Walk has been organizing cities and towns across America to fight hunger around the world and in their community for 50 years, and whereas Cabarrus County has been a part of the Crop Hunger Walk since 1978, raising over $30,000 per year in recent years in the fight against hunger. And whereas by participating in the Crop Hunger Walk, we can draw attention not only to the problems of hunger, but also to solutions, improving the quality of life of all our neighbors, no matter where they live, and supporting thriving livelihoods for all people. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Sunday, October 13th, as Crop Hunger Walk Day in Cabarrus County, and encourage all citizens to support observances that raise public awareness concerning hunger and poverty, their causes, and their solutions. And so at this time, do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and Dennis, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I'm one of those retirees that does come back from time to time. I'm just thinking tonight, as I'm standing here, Pastor Karkin's church, there's more money that comes out of Central United Methodist Church for the Crop Walk every year than any one church, any other church in Cabarrus County, so they're the pay setters, and we're indebted to them, and Lucy Shan, who is their workhorse fundraiser, but they account for quite a bit of the, over $30,000 that we've been raising in recent years from the Crop Walk. I'm looking up at Vice Chairman Honeycutt, and I know that every time I go to Cooperative Christian Ministry, not every time, because the van stays busy, but there is a van there that she had a big part in her real estate firm in helping get food distributed, picked up, and moved around the county. So, there are ways that all of us have participated. I want to underscore that the walk is, we rotate back and forth from Kannapolis and Concord as to where the walk is based each year, so this year, the walk is back in Concord. It will start out from Forest Hill United Methodist Church on Sunday, October 13th. The walk starts at 2:00. Registration starts probably as early as 12:30. Gives you maybe enough time to get home and change into some clothes if you're worshiping in another congregation that Sunday. I was doing some reading today and was looking at some of the work that this body, Cabarrus County Commissioners, have done towards hunger over the years. I looked at a study that through National Association of Counties, about three years old now, that identified that there are about 1 in 8 people in Cabarrus County that are food insecure. In our schools, I think Cabarrus County is probably about like most other counties in the state, where about half of the kids qualify for free lunches. So, much to my disappointment, and I've been involved in this walk since I came to Cabarrus County in 1990 to work for the Conservation District, we're not yet, we're working ourselves out of a job. Ending hunger is still a formidable challenge for us, and so we're trying to raise more monies this year. We've set a modest goal of trying to increase our earnings by 5% this year. Look forward to having any and all of the five of you join us on that day, as leaders from throughout the county join together in this annual effort to raise money and to raise awareness about hunger in our midst. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate your support and involvement, and I would encourage everyone to participate. Usually that date in October is one of those crisp, cooler, sunny, Sunday afternoons. I'm trying to be very positive, and positive thinking, with no rain, clear skies, and it's a great experience. So, thank you very much. Next up is a proclamation for Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. The following proclamation contains proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month in Cabarrus County, and I will read that proclamation now. Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month Proclamation. Whereas Cabarrus County is proud to be home to nearly 23,000 community members of Hispanic or Latino descent, whereas Hispanic and Latino community members enrich our communities by sharing their vibrant culture and heritage, and whereas in September 1968, Congress authorized President Lyndon B. Johnson to proclaim National Hispanic Heritage Week, and whereas this celebration was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th, and whereas the United States Congress and the White House call for all Americans to observe this month appropriately, whereas Cabarrus County will join with the rest of the country in recognizing the National Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month by commemorating essential contributions, sacrifices, and accomplishments that Hispanic and Latino people have made to the United States throughout history. Now therefore be it resolved, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. And do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation?
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and that was submitted by Sandra Torres from Healthy Cabarrus Latino Outreach Coordinator with Cabarrus Health Alliance, and I think she is here with us. Did you have anything to add, Sandra?
You know, I just want to say thank you.
If you would come to the microphone, so that our TV audience can hear.
I just want to say thank you for all you do, for all your help, and for thinking about the Latino community. You guys, especially Mike, but obviously all of you, have been very supportive of El Puente Hispano, our nonprofit organization, and all the work we do with the Latino community and the Health Alliance too. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, and gracias.
Great, thank you. I think we're seeing a theme here with the Cabarrus Health Alliance, and also to add in Dennis's comments about the Crop Walk, the Health Alliance and Healthy Cabarrus has been very instrumental in identifying food deserts and addressing those issues in our community as well. So, thank you all as you depart. Okay, next up are informal public comments. Those are normally people that have filled out the yellow cards, which I have none tonight. So, we will move to, oh, we do have one yellow card. So, at this time, I would call Julia B. Bowman to the podium, and if you would, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to comment. Thank you.
Well, I hope I can do this in three minutes, but as you had just said, my name is Julia Bowman. I live in the southwest part of Cabarrus County. I moved there in 1976. This area is a small housing development, modest, and when I first moved into my house, the first thing I noticed was in the right back corner, a structure which I understand is a manhole. That manhole is, has a connection from a concrete pipe from there to the street. At the street, there's a storm grate. Across the street is another storm grate, and I did not know until recently that underneath the street, there's a pipe that connects, you know, to the pipe that goes down by my property. Last year, I discovered a sinkhole. I immediately tried to cover it up, so it would be safe to anybody that walked by my property. I then, you know, went to try to find somebody that could help me solve this problem. The first place I went was soil and water conservation, which I knew was not going to help me, but I had to start somewhere. The next place I went was planning and zoning of Cabarrus County or Concord. These men listened very attentively to what I had to say. At the end of my little speech to them, one of them told me to call this man in Mooresville. I do not know, I assumed that he was with the Department of Transportation, I don't know, but when I called him, he was mean to me on the phone. He would not listen to what I had to say, and he hung up on me. That was a bit discouraging. Next thing I did was to call Mount Pleasant, you know, because I knew that they covered the area of Cabarrus Woods, you know, and their maintenance of that part of the county. Five weeks later, a gentleman came out to look at that hole. I was surprised that he didn't have any kind of equipment with him, you know, to look at the hole. He didn't even have a flashlight, which is beside the point, I suppose. Anyway, he told me that I needed to get a couple of men, or some men, to dig down underneath that pipe and seal it with quick crease. I did that, had that done, and two days after it was done, we had one of those heavy rains, and it just blew it. I knew that was going to happen. I may be a female, but I do have a little sense. Well, I also took $1,000 out of my pocket, because that's what it cost me to get that fixed. In the meantime, I was so discouraged, I didn't do anything. So, I learned that there are two of my neighbors, both of who are men, and I tie them up.
You can go ahead and finish up.
Okay, both of who are men, who had the assistance of the Department of Transportation out of Mount Pleasant to fix problems on their property that related to, you know, drainage problems, storm drainage problems. One had his pipe stopped up, and the other one had two sinkholes. Now, when I think about that, what that tells me, that there is gender discrimination. Okay, proceed. I then called Mr. Littlejohn, who is a district manager and his, out of Alamoor. Couple weeks later, he came to see me, dressed in a business suit, which I, you know, why? Anyway, because he was supposed to be looking at that hole as well, which he sort of told, and he told me to pretty much do the same thing that the guy out of Mount Pleasant told me to do, which I didn't even bother, because I knew that wasn't going to work either. Now, I think that, I mean, I know the Department of Transportation is a good, you know, part of keeping our roads up to date and et cetera, but I know they don't have time to deal with somebody like me. I understand that, but there needs to be some kind of group of workers who, all they do is, you know, have small, small things like this to solve. The other thing that has absolutely blown me away is the fact that I, a private citizen, am expected to maintain a public, you know, this is a, that storm drain thing is a public utility, and I shouldn't have to pay for, you know, maintaining it. I don't know who in the world decided that that was something that a private citizen had to do, but I ask you, please, to have somebody reconsider all this, and to get me some help to get this done, because I can't take any more of it. I've done everything I know to do. I'm a responsible person. I don't do drugs and don't drink. I pay my taxes, and I've paid a lot of taxes in Cabarrus County since 1976. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, and we've got your information here with your address and phone number, and we'll check into which direction. I don't think this is a county department, but we will come to you with the information as to... as to
Thank you.
as to who will be responsible. Thank you. Okay, we move now to our consent agenda, and you all have a copy of that before you, which are items that we have discussed at our work session a few weeks ago. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes to approve the consent agenda, and we now move to new business. First up is our Community Transportation Grant, and I think Bob Bushy is with us to brief us on that prior to holding a public hearing.
Good evening. We are here with our annual 5311 Community Transportation Grant through the state of North Carolina. This year, we will be applying for $170,139 in administrative funds, which requires a 15% local match, $25,522, as well as $393,000 in capital funds for replacement of 6 vehicles that have met their useful life. This will have a 10% county match of $39,300. Total project will be $563,139, with a local share of $64,822. As you stated, it does require a public hearing, after which we would ask the Commissioners to accept the grant along with the associated resolution.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bushy? Okay, hearing none. We will now open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on the fiscal year 21531 Community Transportation Administrative and Capital Grant. Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year 21531 Community Transportation Administrative and Capital Grant and the related resolution. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next up from Planning and Development is the 2018-19 Home Program Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and we are delighted to have Kelly Siffert with us to talk about that.
Thank you. As Jonathan presented to you in the agenda session, we budgeted $289,930.06, which was comprised of 2015 and 16 funds, 2016 and 17 funds, the required county match, and program income that we had from jobs that got paid off. We expended $287,190.09 in 91 cents on the administration and the construction of the senior apartment complex on El Paso Road. As you are aware, it is under construction, so we don't have any beneficiaries at this time, but we did support 6 units with that money, which Concord, or I'm sorry, Conapolis and Prosperity Ridge also contributed home funds to that project, so there'll be a number of supported units with that. Are there any questions?
Okay, questions for Kelly? Thank you. And we do require a public hearing on this, so at this time, I will open the public hearing for the 2018-19 Home Program Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on this matter. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And let's see, we do have, let's see, do we have a vote on that as well?
There's no need, just a public hearing.
Just the public hearing.
We've already submitted the report to Concord for their review and submission to HUD.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, from Tax Administration, Presentation of the Schedule of Value Standards and Rules, and we are delighted to have Justin Udi with us to talk about that. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Schedule of Values is the manual we use to value all the properties in Cabarrus County for tax purposes. The schedule includes all our models, formulas, and valuation methods used by our staff to arrive at market value as of the effective date of our revaluation. North Carolina General Statute 105-317(c) outlines the process for adoption of the schedule, part of which is a public hearing, which is why I'm before you tonight. At this time, does anybody have any questions?
Okay, thank you. I think we did talk about the Schedule of Values at our work session 2 weeks ago, and indicated that there were copies available for the public to examine, both online as well as in the Tax Administration office.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And that we would have a public hearing on this date to allow anyone to comment. So at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak on the Schedule of Value Standards and Rules. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and I think that we will bring this back up again later. Or do we need a vote?
Next vote session.
Right, okay. Very good. So next item, from Infrastructure and Asset Management, Town of Midland Temporary Construction Easement at Rob Wallace Park, and we are happy to have Kyle Billiford to tell us about that.
Good evening. The Town of Midland is requesting a temporary construction easement at the Rob Wallace Park for a sidewalk to connect to a crosswalk that will cross over Bethel School Road and connect the Saddle Brook, Bethel Glen, and Brentwood communities. The sidewalk inside the park will be approximately 200 linear feet, and that is what the temporary construction easement will be provided on. The Town of Midland needs this easement executed in order to provide it to the DOT as part of the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program Fund Request Application. They're using grant money for this. We've been in the talks with this for about 2 and 1/2 years now, and I've been working with the Town of Midland. They were not under the impression that they would need this easement. They had been having several conversations with the DOT. In fact, the application was due last Friday, and the DOT kind of got with them on this easement at the last moment, which is where the county came in. So, the county attorney and I worked with them on a temporary easement that will expire 180 days after, so, or until construction is finished, whichever is first. So that's what I'm asking for. The motion is to allow us to authorize that easement and have the county manager execute that, subject to any review or revisions by the county attorney. But again, Mr. Cook has already reviewed that.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Billiford?
How long is the anticipated schedule?
They've given me no indication, I believe, that they feel it'll depend on when the funds actually come from the DOT. The actual, just looking at it and knowing construction, I wouldn't say more than a few weeks, but I'm curious which portion they'll start. So that's going to be a sidewalk, and there is a print that was on the attachments. Sidewalk down the street, crossing over then an island in the middle, and then our sidewalk. I don't know which part they'll start first. I would anticipate ours would be the last. And we have not had a logistics meeting on site to go over this, but I have reviewed all the elevation cuts and the materials, and it meets our requirements.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the temporary construction easement for the Town of Midland and authorize the county manager to execute the easement documents on behalf of Cabarrus County, subject to review or revisions by the county attorney.
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. At this time, we move to reports, and first up, we will receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards or committees. It looks like you're queued up, Commissioner Honeycutt.
Yeah, the senior advisory council people, they are on the ball. They have a report every month. So just to update you, these are just a few of the things going on. The Cabarrus Senior Games has 55 participants registered to compete in the 2019 North Carolina Senior State Game Finals, beginning September 16th, in various locations across the state. There will be a homemade ice cream churn-off held at the Concord Senior Center on Tuesday, September 24th at 2:00 p.m. The event is free. An archery tournament will be held Thursday, September 26th at Concord Senior Center. Cost is only $5. The Moon Glow Cornhole Doubles Tournament will be held Tuesday, October 1st at 6:00 p.m. at the Concord Senior Center. The cost is only $10 per 2-person team. And then they have a Senior Center Travel Club taking the Amtrak train to the North Carolina State Fair on Monday, October 21st. The cost is $60 for over 65, and $69 for 64 and under. So if you have any questions, feel free to contact the Senior Center. And there's lots more events if those don't push your buttons.
So in order to eat ice cream at this churn-off, do you have to participate, or can you just show up and eat the ice cream?
I think you can just participate and eat. You can also bring, there was a line I left out that says, "Contestants bring their own ice cream mixture and churn to freeze it." So if you want to be part of the contest, I think you can bring your freezer and compete.
Very good.
If you want to just go eat, I think you'll get by with it.
Thank you. Okay, are there other reports? Commissioner Shue?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to give a real brief update on, as you all know, I'm the liaison for the Central United Council of Government, and one of the things that they do, this is the 5th year, I believe it is, maybe the 4th year, that they offer what they refer to as the Charlotte Airport Academy. And I've been able to attend that, and I have done 4 of their meetings, spending a lot of time at the Charlotte Airport, learning about the economic impact and how it affects a region around Cabarrus County. And Commissioner Poole and I have been doing this, and we got tomorrow night and then 2 other times that we'll be meeting. And all, but they're telling us how, and what, and where the money goes, and, you know, people wouldn't really believe it, but you would guess what would be the number 1 revenue of the Charlotte Airport? What would be the number 1 revenue for them? And, you know, you think about it, there's, you know, there's a lot of different streams of revenue coming in, but it comes from parking. Parking is where their biggest income comes from, and they have a very huge budget, but the estimated economic impact for the airport on a yearly basis is somewhere in the range of $23 billion a year, and that affects Cabarrus County. They often, and Commissioner Poole may say something at some point, you know, about this, maybe the next time we meet, we'll have a little bit more detail, but they often refer to as the Concord Regional Airport as a little competition for them. Of course, you know, we're not near as big as they are. They're 6,000 acres. I don't know how many we have out there, but, you know, we are doing good, but I've really enjoyed it. Tomorrow night, we're going to be going to the fire department, and what they do, and how they prepare in the event of an accident, some type of an event or anything. So, I hope to let you know more things when we finish all this up, maybe in October. But I've enjoyed, and I would encourage each commissioner and anyone that's in a leadership capacity, when you get a chance to do this, do it, because it don't cost that much, but the knowledge that you get from it is invaluable. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We appreciate you and Commissioner Poole representing Cabarrus County, and it certainly sounds like an interesting experience. Are there other reports? Okay, hearing none. I will mention that we always have a number of vacancies on various county boards and committees. You can find a list of those on our website, or certainly by calling our clerk's office if you require additional information, but we encourage people to participate and would welcome your application if you would be interested in serving on one of those boards. And we move now to general comments by board members, if anyone has anything additional. Okay, hearing none. Kason, we're delighted to have you with us. Thank you for being here. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation, economic development, and acquisition of real property as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 11A, 3, 4, and 5.
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are now in closed session, and we want to thank all of you for joining us tonight.